Fourteenth Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Remind us of our guiding principles and the actions we are about to take this evening. Are we raising the bar? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building connections with outside partners? And is the decision-making process positively impacting diversity, equity, and... Anne, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a published agenda. Are there any amendments? Councilmember Carchardi?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to add to our consent agenda this evening. Item G, and that would be the excusal of Councilmember Clausen for business purposes.
Seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Carchardi and a second by Councilmember Trenary to excuse Councilmember Clausen for business reasons and add it as Consent Item G. Any discussion of that? All, every, from my mind blank there. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? That has been added to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Councilmember Carchardi, second by Councilmember Lucarelli to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion of the agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the agenda is set for this evening. We are to our first citizen comment period for anything on this evening's agenda. We have a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting also. Is there any wishing to address the council for items on the agenda this evening?
Well, I was wondering, I had talked to Cindy and she said that...
You could approach the mic so everybody could hear you.
I don't see it on the agenda, but I was wondering if I'm on the agenda or should I come back at a different meeting?
Actually, this is going to be extremely short. I asked about this.
Uh huh.
And so if you just wait just a short period of time, you'll be able to speak again. Our agenda is extremely short tonight.
Oh, okay, great.
So, thank you.
In our second citizen comment period, you can address the council for any reasons.
Expecting to hear from you, thank you.
Number 11.
All right, so we, anybody online? There's no one else in the public? Please use the raise your hand feature. Okay, hearing none while closed, the first citizen comment period. We're to our consent agenda. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Lucarelli to approve the amended consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We are, we have no presentations, no public hearings. We're to our first business item, which is Item A, Adoption of a Resolution Fixing the Date for a Public Hearing on a Petition to Vacate City Right-of-Way Portion of an Alley, commonly known as Mystery Lane in the westerly portion of Harrison Avenue. Ms. Wallace, this is you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Petitioners William C. and Virginia Anderson, owners of 812 Mystery Lane Street, Kitsap County Tax Parcel Number 4060-008-022-0105, and Maecela Barden, owner of 1145 Sydney Avenue, Kitsap County Parcel Number 352401-1-004-2000. Submitted a petition to vacate city right-of-way. The right-of-ways are unopened portions of an alley commonly known as Mystery Lane of approximately 8,585 square feet and unopened westerly portion of Harrison Avenue of approximately 3,787 square feet for a total square feet being requested to be vacated of 12,372. The city clerk received a complete application conforming with the requirements of the Port Orchard Mistable Code Chapter .208, including Section 12.08.010. The Public Works Director and Community Development Director support this vacation as the city has no current or future plans to open them. Chapter 35.79 RCW requires that the city adopt a resolution setting a date and time of a public hearing to hear and determine the petition to vacate the city's right-of-way. Staff is seeking direction from the council as to when they would like to hold that public hearing to vacate the proposed city right-of-way. The proposed resolution would set the public hearing in person via Zoom. It would set the hearing in person and via Zoom on April 11th, 2023, which is at least 20 days from the date of this resolution if adopted tonight, March 14th. Upon adoption of this resolution, staff will post proper notices of the date and time of the hearing and provide notice to adjacent property owners. With that, staff recommends the council to adopt a resolution setting the date and time of the hearing on the petition to vacate a portion of the city's right-of-way, commonly known as Mystery Lane. The hearing is to be held on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, at the regular council meeting held at 6:30 PM and directing the proper posting of notices of this hearing.
Riley?
I move to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing for April 11th, 2023, at 6:30 PM on a petition from William C. and Virginia Anderson and Michaela Barden to vacate a portion of unopened right-of-way commonly known as Mystery Lane in the westerly portion of Harrison Avenue.
Seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, a second by Councilmember Trenary. Questions or discussion of this item? It's pretty straightforward, I think.
The seven and a half feet that they're asking to vacate, is that just because they've got improvements in the right-of-way?
Clerk.
In part. So, this area, you'll notice in the packet, there's some very robust information about this request. And this area was sort of platted or there was a subdivision that occurred and the construction of the subdivision did not match sort of the plans. So, this is a matter that is being handled by two attorneys who were hired by Title Company who are attempting to rectify the area in its entirety. So, the reason I'm giving you sort of a long-winded answer to your very simple question is yes, there are houses in the right-of-way, there are other structures in the right-of-way, a great deal of things exist in this right-of-way, so. And the hearing on this will be robust because there's quite a bit of detail related to these requests, yeah. And the city owns property in this area as well.
Okay, just a follow-up question then. So, with that seven and a half feet, are there any further encroachments that would be in the right-of-way?
This is intended to redress all encroachments. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shang?
And a quick question for the city attorney.
Yeah.
In broad terms, do you think the vacation is going to be split up amongst the 11th parcel owners that are affected by it?
That is the intent, and you'll notice there's applications from or petitions from all of those property owners. The big exception would be that the city is one of those parcel owners, so we wouldn't be, you own one of the ones at the top end of the area, so, yeah. But I believe that they took strides or they took efforts to make sure everyone in the area is participating.
Okay, this is to set the, be voting on fixing the date for a public hearing to vacate city right-of-way. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. The hearing date has been set. We're to Item B, Adoption of a Resolution in Approving a Lease with Peninsula Feed for the Use of Public Right-of-Way on Harrison Avenue. Ms. Wallace, this is also you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. The city entered into a lease agreement with Peninsula Feed Company on September 1st, 2012. The Finance Committee has been working with staff to determine the full fair market rental value of the leased property, and a new valuation was provided to staff on February 13th, 2023. Historically, the lease has been for 25 feet deep by 200 feet wide portion of the city right-of-way on Harrison Avenue. The purpose of this lease is to allow Peninsula Feed Company access, additional parking, merchandise storage, and direct access into their building. Because parking is vital to downtown, we are reducing the leased portion from 25 feet by 200 feet to 29 feet by 129 feet. The right-of-way abuts the parking lot and building located at 901 Bay Street. On Harrison Avenue, the first approximately 70 feet will be opened to the public for one-hour parking. The lease originally commenced September 1st, 2012, with the initial base rate of $453.34 per month with annual adjustments based upon the CPIU factors. With the new valuation provided, staff is recommending the monthly lease rate be at $639, which includes annual rent escalation to keep up with anticipated marketing, market demand and pricing. With that, staff recommends adoption of the resolution approving a lease agreement with Peninsula Feed Company as presented, and I will bring up the map that gives you the area while you consider this matter.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with Peninsula Feed Company as presented.
Seconded.
By Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Carchardi. One correction in your staff report, this matter never went to the Finance Committee. It was purely administrative. And so historically, they have leased all the way from Bay Street to the, and the yellow box, and this new lease is gonna, is going in, they've got Peninsula Feed only parking signs currently there. Think there's five parking stalls there. Now, we will, those will be public parking there. They need, you know, the right-of-way goes right up to the edge of their building, and you know, they need that area for their merchandise and their employee parking as well as access to their building. There's a, there's a large garage door on the side of the building, if you haven't noticed it before. But, so we are reducing the area that we're leasing, and we're actually getting a little bit more than the prior lease because the cost has gone up. So, Councilmember Deener?
So, when we communicated this change to them, were they okay with it?
Yeah, and actually, they, they were open to, it's very difficult, they don't want to tell anybody. So, while they have signs, they have difficulty enforcing any type of parking restrictions there. This way, at least, our parking enforcement, you know, it'll turn over every hour, which meets their needs, and, and other patrons can use it. Because it's not, you know, it's underutilized. Councilmember Shang?
Yeah, I, I think this is a good move because I've always felt a little uncomfortable that this entire strip went to one business as opposed to any other business. And we know that the businesses across Harrison would, are very short on parking, and they don't provide enough parking for their, their own businesses. I still think it's very favorable to Peninsula Feed, but I think this is certainly a good step, that there's now five spaces for anyone else to park, even if it's just for one hour.
Councilmember Trenary?
Just want to clarify, this is free one-hour parking, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No? Councilmember Deener, you have another?
And then will we be signing it or striping it or anything to give the public indication?
Yes, Public Works will be, once, once, we're, actually, as soon as we can get to it, but we'll also need to amend our parking regulations, I'm certain, to capture these parking stalls too. So, it won't happen immediately, but yeah, we're gonna, I think curb stops, better curb stops need to be, we're gonna have to do a little bit of work there for striping and signage. Just add it to your laundry list, Tony. Other questions or comments?
When does it start?
September 1st, April 30.
Fair opportunity to go from one-hour parking to two-hour parking, I'm just thinking with all the restaurants right there. I don't know.
They, Penfee did ask for one hour, because...
What doesn't belong to them, though?
Correct. It's your call, it is your call.
I'm just, just thinking, you know, a lot of people, they're probably gonna go there that, you know, there's just the restaurants, and I don't know that you can get in and out in an hour, is the only thing I was thinking.
Why did they ask for one hour, do you know?
Well, if that's, if all of those stalls, you know, people that are buying things there, they're large bulky items that require to most likely be loaded in a truck, and if you're having to park a distance from there, we are impacting that business pretty significantly. It's your, it is your call.
I think they still have plenty of parking in the yellow area, that's...
That is, that's, that isn't really what they use it for parking, it's where they put their merchandise.
I didn't scan the lease. Does the lease call out that it needs to be for one-hour parking? Is that party to the lease, or is that just something that we, I mean, I can look real quick, but...
I do not believe it's in the lease because our intent was to modify the code to make that a change.
I'm just bringing it up, I just, is that the right timeframe? That's all.
I think, I think personally, the one hour is a, is a great time limit there because you do have a couple of the restaurants there that you can get in and out of quickly, but not only that, we have some businesses along that strip mall on the east side of that entrance that would appreciate having a little bit more parking, and chances of being in those businesses for more than an hour are slim.
I agree with the one hour. I think it seems reasonable.
That's probably not the action for you tonight. We're gonna bring that back later, but I think as we deliver this lease, there shouldn't be any surprises later to this business because they're, they're, you know, we've negotiated the terms of this with that intent.
So, just to clarify, the one-hour limit parking is not in the lease directly, it is listed as the, as the exhibit under this page here that limit, that states that the one in blue is gonna be one hour, and then it is also identified in the resolution. So, if the council wants to change that, we would just do a modification to this exhibit as well as the resolution to adjust it to two hours.
Regardless, that has to be changed in our code and our stopping.
That would be the final resolution, yes.
But it is, it is in an exhibit attached to this lease?
Correct, yeah. Correct, as one hour, yes.
It is part of the lease?
Yep.
Okay, so you are, you are affecting what we can do for the term of this lease anyhow.
Well, would we be bound by this if we wanted to revisit this? Because this is public right-of-way that they're not leasing.
Well, I think it's a gray area if it's an attachment to, an exhibit to a lease.
That they're not leasing.
But they're not leasing.
Well, no, they're not leasing, yeah, sorry. That was the confusing part of the question, I apologize, or my understanding of the question. So, no, you would not be bound by the exhibit to this lease as to the blue area, which they're not leasing. Right, right. So, but it's contemplated that that will be limited to one hour. So, you have two opportunities, well, you'll have a future opportunity when we modify the code as to what designation you want to give to these stalls. I think it's less important that we make that modification to this exhibit to the lease because, as you say, you're not bound by this. It's not something that's binding us to them. It's more illustrative, I apologize when I heard the question, I thought it was about putting them on notice that these spots will be limited, and it is incorporated for the sense of putting them on notice, but we can absolutely modify that and push out information to them when you choose to modify it. It's not a term of the lease.
I just think it would be disingenuine if we went into this, the intent would be at one hour, if the intent is to make it something different.
Why don't you just say that the council brought it up, and they're talking about one or two-hour parking?
Or can we add the word contemplating, limited to one hour?
Yeah, it's contemplating, I mean, it's...
I think what I'm hearing is for purposes of this, this is okay because it's a future action.
Yeah, their lawyer could stick to it and say it says limited to one hour. What if we had contemplating, limited to one hour, just so they're clear on it?
But it's not part of their not leasing.
No, it's not part of the lease. They're all looking at the exhibits.
Not their property.
We can absolutely communicate to them that this is a contemplated action, it's not, it's not, the illustrative exhibit is not intended to be binding. We can communicate that.
Move the limited to one hour part and just leave it's gonna be open for public parking?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Who?
I believe it's been transmitted to them, but I think we absolutely can, we're still in conversation, so.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the intent, then? Is that, is there a, probably needed a motion to amend, or is not necessary?
No, I don't, oh, to, when they actually approve the document? No, because is there, is there, has there been a motion made on this yet?
Yes.
Apologies, okay. No, that can be treated as a friendly modification with the motion maker and the second's approval, and we'll just remove that from the document, the, everything that comes after the comma on this exhibit.
I'm okay with that.
And I'll make sure I have a conversation with them.
And, and associated changes to the resolution?
Okay, further questions or comments? I'm not ignoring you, Jay, I'm trying to pay attention to you. All right, you'd be voting on Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Lease with Peninsula Lease for the Use of Public Right-of-Way. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. We're to our last business item, is approval of the February 28th council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the February 28th minutes as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Lucarelli to approve the February 28th council meeting minutes. I believe I have one abstention from Councilmember Carchardi. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstention from Councilmember Carchardi. All right, we have a discussion item. I've already ran the three dates I'm about to propose by John Clausen, so they work with him for their, our strategic planning session that got postponed, so does everybody have their calendar handy? All right, John's preferred date would be May 12th. And I've got two other dates as long as we end by 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock. He's got something in the afternoon on the other two dates, so if the state doesn't, and I've got April 14th and May 26th, but let's start with May 12th.
I can make that work.
May 12th's good.
It seems far off, though.
Trust me, you guys are like herding cats. He gave me his blackout dates, too, so I'm...
So, we're good with May 12th, then?
Here's so. Cindy's still looking.
I've got, I'll see if I can change something.
Okay, do we want to see if we can find another date that works for everybody? We just gotta make sure we end on tonight, which shouldn't be a problem. April 14th?
Does that work?
All right, John said he can make that one work too, we just gotta make sure we get our work done.
The time, just so we can put on, we're gonna go?
Nine to...
Nine to three or something?
Two.
Nine to two.
Nine to two.
So, April 14th?
Mm-hmm. Okay, that was too easy. Let's see here, Council Committee reports, economic development, tourism is scheduled for Monday, but there's only one item, and it was yours, and it's gonna get punted, so I'm willing to bet that that meeting could get canceled because there was only one agenda item that's gonna get moved. But Nick's out of town on vacation, so watch your email, I won't be surprised if that gets, that council meeting gets moved. March 28th is the next utility committee, that's next, it's a week, two weeks away. Finance Committee meets next week, and that meeting's being canceled due to the lack of agenda items, and we'll send the financials out to everybody electronically. Transportation met tonight, so, Councilmember Shang?
Yeah, briefly, we had updates on the citywide paving, which is going to add in March. That includes the Clifton overlay, and he said the 23 and 24 work. Let's see, pottery is going to add in late April, and Bethel 5A, Bethel Lincoln may be delayed partly due to the consultant's changeover in personnel. And Bay Street path is proceeding, I guess we'll get a separate update on that.
Soon as we have answers from WashDOT.
We talked about speeding in McCormick Woods. Actually, we talked about how they're doing a traffic impact study of all of McCormick Woods, including McCormick Woods Drives and Mary Mac, and so we'll be getting the results from that. And we talked about the mayor's March 8th email, which was the February traffic results from the chief. It was kind of interesting, it showed that a lot of the mornings, all the morning speeders were residents, and most of the afternoon speeders were construction workers. Then we spoke about pottery in Sydney Road, which is going to be going on a road diet. I don't know the date of that, it'll be narrowed. And we had a, probably the longest discussion was when we might want to lower the speed limit on Potter, Sydney Pottery from Tremont to Sedwick from 30 to 25 miles per hour, and the committee decided it should be done when work is completed as opposed to right-of-way. That was what we discussed the most. Oh, no, then we talked about DOT's Fish Passage, there's two of them in the city limits, one's around Ross Creek and one's near Mile Hill and Olney, and we had discussion about potential closures, but they are not actually, we don't know when they'll be closed.
They're not gonna close. Initially, they came to us on the Mile Hill project and wanted to close the road, and we pushed back on that and said, no way, it doesn't work. You know, it would've saved them four or five million dollars to close the road because then they could do a box culvert versus a bridge, but there really weren't any viable detour routes to send people up Jackson and down to Bethel and when, when, excuse me, yeah, down Lund to Bethel when that intersection can't... traffic, so, so we pushed back, and they're going to build, keep the road open and build the bridge in two halves to facilitate, and there's actually four projects. There's the Fish Passes, Culverts on Highway 16, which are in the city, they aren't, these are, these are all state routes. The one that Fred spoke to at Ross Creek, and then of course, the one at Anderson Creek at the bottom of the boulevard, but Highway 16's probably the closest to construction, and we don't have construction dates yet, and then followed by Mile Hill, and then these other two that are just starting designs, so. That it for your report?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, and just festival chimes and lights on March 20th, I see. You know, give us a report probably next, next meeting. Land use is March 22nd. Lodging tax, it's been changed, okay? When's, somebody needs to get that date to the clerk, I don't know.
I think it was changed to the 29th.
Could be, could be that, okay? And so that'll be updated, and sewer advisory is on March 22nd. And to the mayor's report, we tackled the, the date, so I, we would really like, while, this will be a mid-year review item, we've had some good meetings with the bank and are working on a development agreement with them, and they're, they're, they're not very comfortable with the fact that we haven't started design or what the concept, we have concepts for the Orchard Street Plaza, and that's the plaza between the community center and the banks project, okay? So, we've got our design underway for the building, the shoreline restoration, we're anxiously waiting our federal awards so that then we can start the design for the roadway, but what we, Nick would like to do is to go through the selection process, which is going to take us a few months to do, and negotiate the scope and fee ahead of the mid-year review process so we know what it's gonna cost, and so we can make an informed decision as we do the mid-year review. And this would be a good gesture to the bank that we've started this process at least, and that we've got our consultant ready to go, and then it's really gonna be a matter, this, this will be funded out of park impact fees, and, and when the mid-year review process this fall, if we've got enough park impact fees, then we'll be able to award this contract and know what the cost of that contract, and they can hit the ground running. So, I just wanted to talk to you guys about that before we start, you know, start a selection process. Any concerns with that?
What are their concerns about our timeframe?
That they're gonna build a building and that we're not moving forward on the Orchard Street Plaza, you know, and, and their project marries up to this plaza, so they'd like to know what the design is and what they're marrying up, up to.
Sure, what about the lift that's needed down there as well?
Those are all conversations where, yeah, you're right, these are all, and the roadway is probably the bigger concern for them and the sidewalk improvements and what the interim, and, and to be honest, I'd like to have answers, but until we get the designs going and we're working with Congressman Kilmer's office to get, we know we've got the money, it was in the federal budget, we're just, we're working through a federal process to get our award letter, and once we get that award letter, it'll tell us all the rules we have to follow for, for the award, and then we can, you know, advertise and select, and we have the money, we know it's coming, but we can't, we gotta make sure we're following the proper rules before we go through a selection process on that, so. That, that one's critical, too, the roadway project, because it defines, you know, the The roadway, the roadway project, because it defines, you know, the height of the sidewalks that need to, because they have to build their frontage improvements. So, it's important that they marry up with our new street, you know, so all of this stuff is critical, that they're all being designed collaboratively, and that we get all of these design elements done. And they recognize, we want to do the, in the perfect world, they move into their building, we start our community center project, and we're able, that we've got the funds. The road also got built, probably in 2025, no later than 2026. And in 2026, we, we break ground on the community center, and we award the community center contract, the shoreline contract, and the Orchard Street Plaza all at once as one construction project.
And demo.
And demo. And, and that would be, that's the perfect scenario, and it's all going to be really contingent on the, the economy, and a large portion of these funds are going to come from, well, we've got public facilities district money, our portion is coming from park impact fees. And, you know, they're coming in very strong, continue to come in strong, but, you know, it's tough to predict the future. So, okay, I'll give Nick the green light to at least start that selection process. And this, I now have a moment where unfortunately, I, I get to say I told you so to staff, and I did, with that lead certification process that you guys approved last council meeting. And I kept saying, "But I think there's two steps to this." No, 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 this is everything. And so, Bryce Ferguson came back to Nick and said, "Well, now, now you need to select and hire your owner's rep. So, what you approved is the body of work to select the elements to get the points that we need, okay? So, that's one in body of work. And then we have to have our owner's rep that oversees the construction to make sure those things happen, and then that person, that person or firm does the commissioning at the end and gives our certification to the state. So, there's another consultant, and the range is $30,000 to $50,000. And so, we need to negotiate and select and negotiate with a firm. So, we said last meeting, this is, this is everything for lead. It's not, there's one more piece for that. So, unfortunately, I've got to bring that back. I've had conversations, we're going to, at our work study next week, we're going to be talking extensively, Charlie's got a presentation regarding our, our policies and procedures for dealing with the homeless and homeless encampments. And the big challenge, biggest challenge we have in the Blake decision and the Grants Pass, new, new Grants Pass decision, is we have to have a shelter beds in the city of Port Orchard. And it's, I'm not certain that we're even going to, unless the Grants Pass gets overturned, whether we could even contract with the county for the Mile Hill Shelter Beds, which is a game changer. And we'll talk extensively about that next week. But, so, I went to the Vista Motel, and I've talked to them, and, and Charlie is, is working on an agreement that I'll likely bring to the council for us to provide short-term stays at the shelter bed for those that want services, so that we can try to get them to services. The vast majority of the folks out there don't want our help or our services, but if we don't have a shelter bed to offer, then we can't deal with them as firmly as, as we, I would like to, and we need to.
But what are you ballparking in terms of number of beds?
You know, a bed or two, it's, you know, we don't very often deal with a situation like we dealt with at the roundabout there by the mattress store. But in that situation, we needed two beds, you know, and to, at least to offer. I'm not certain that those individuals would have taken them, but they, they knew that if we didn't have a bed, we couldn't, couldn't force them to, to leave.
Correct.
Notified them that they were trespassing and so on and so forth, so. Well, anyway, I'm just letting you know that the Vista's, you know, they're going to have strict rules, you know, and, and I support that, that no drug use, no guests, you know, so on and so forth. But we'll be bringing, hopefully, in the, by the end of the month, an agreement between us and the Vista Motel, and we'll talk at length next week about our, the policies that we've been working to develop. Go ahead, Scott.
You mentioned Grants Pass decision and potentially being appealed. Has it been appealed?
So, it is still waiting. I think, I haven't checked today, but we sought a full panel en banc review of the decision. And so, that's another level of review that occurs at the Ninth Circuit. And then, once that's decided, either we get a full panel review, and then another decision is rendered, or, or they decline full panel review, then it's appealable to the U.S. Supreme Court. So, that has not yet occurred because the first has not yet occurred.
So, bottom line is, we need some more tools in our toolbox, and I'm working to create that.
Well, so, and what about? I hate to go there, but what about annexation? If we need to get a number of beds inside the city limit? Yeah, just food for thought.
I know that there's a bill afoot that, it hasn't passed yet, and who knows, we're running out of time in this session, that, that creates another tool, a revenue tool for cities and counties to share some state sales tax dollars that would come to the jurisdictions as part of an agreement to promote annexation. You know, we're supposed to be taking our urban growth area, and when I saw this bill, I, I thought it was a great opportunity for the Bethel South area in particular, where there's some retail. And, you know, county and city benefit from, from that, those dollars from the state to facilitate that annexation. But we'll see if the bill passes or not.
It seems kind of ludicrous that we couldn't rely on the Mile Hill Shelter once it's open.
Certainly does to me, too. But that's the current Ninth Circuit decision, hopefully, you know, and who knows how long those appeals will take. It's, it's frustrating. Other things in the legislature, the, and I think it was in the Senate, there's half, so one, one, one of the two sizes passed a Blake fix that makes it a gross misdemeanor, the drug possession. Unfortunately, it is a gross, is a gross misdemeanor versus a felony. It's going to land in our court and the county's district court, so. Hailtime and therapeutic courts, so more come on that. We've got, the Senate passed one of the pursuit bills. It isn't everything we want. It's not going to still allow us to car thefts or property crime, but, you know, it's something. And so, that's advancing. And unfortunately, the House, the Bateman Bill for Missing Middle passed the House, and that is the zoning mandates around big, single-family dwellings. It won't affect us until we reach 25,000 citizens, but it, any single-family lot can have up to a fourplex on it, so. So, that still hasn't gotten to the Senate yet. I had a great conversation with the Morning Rotary Club, you know, our, our pickleball court and sports court up there, that we've got a grant, and we need another $150,000, and it's going to be a mid-year review item. They are going to make it their fundraising project, and they hope to raise that whole $150,000 for us, so. And so, I said, "Well, I, you know, I've been having a conversation. Give me your proposal and how you want to be recognized, and I'll share it with the city council," and, and I think that's pretty exciting. Met also recently with the Port of Bremerton about their parking on the waterfront and the swap, and it, while they're going to take the lots that they control back over, they're going to leave the parking as it is, and just, and the downside to it is, we get $50,000 a year from parking revenue from that lot that will go to the Port of Bremerton because it's now their lot. But they're going to, and that lot is between a third to no more than 50% full, the paid lot. It just doesn't, since COVID and the opening of the Southworth Ferry, Fast Ferry, it's really diminished the use down here of our parking lot. And so, they're going to commingle their marine, marina tenants with the paid parking, and there still should be excess capacity in that lot. And we, we talked about them paying us for parking enforcement, and we looked at, it was about 20% of the time of those two part-time employees, and a number we came to was about $12,000 that they would pay us a year for us to have us enforce parking in that parking lot. So, they're working on the first cut of that agreement, and I hope to see that in, in the next month or so, because, you know, a lot of nonprofits use, use that lot, you know, for various purposes, and we want to get the control over. So, minutes from past year, so 50 years ago, in 1973, the clerk read a letter from the school district requesting that the city annex the area around, including South Kitsap High School. So, in 1973, that wasn't in the city. The police, the police chief, Chief Dowell, spoke in opposition based on his staffing concerns. Don't we hear this all the time from the police chief? The fire chief, Chief Weatherall, who later became our city mayor, our mayor, stated that no chief and fire chief in his right mind would assume responsibility for the high school as the buildings are unsafe. Well, three years later, the city council accepted that annexation in 1976, and it wasn't until 1980 that the new high school opened up. So, anyway, it's just interesting little things that I found in the minutes. In, you know, 75 years ago, though, it just amazed, and 100 years ago, I just found that there wasn't a lot significantly going on, but the, the city council's really down in the weeds. And so, in 1948, a report was made about rubbish had been dumped into the street near the bus depot, which is, the bus depot was down by the Bay Street East Row. And this matter was referred to the police department by the city council for investigation because there was garbage dumped in the street. And the city also approved that evening in these individual items, the licensing of a truck for $1.75, and an oil, the purchase of an oil can for $1.03. So, 100 years ago, it was similar. The city council paid bills, one for $4 for a half-day's work for Mr. C.E. Lansford, and $3.04 for the, for the purchase of a starting, starting crank for the, for the fire truck. So, city council meetings have changed a little bit since then, so. That ends my report, and Department Heads, Tony, what do you have for us this evening?
I do not have anything tonight, thank you.
Fund?
I have nothing as well. You covered all the items I anticipated briefing on, so nothing further, thank you.
Chief, you going to talk about staffing?
No, you haven't listened since 1947, so. No, that's not true. Actually, I am playing catch-up from being gone for three weeks, so I don't have anything tonight, but thank you.
Wallace?
I don't have anything either tonight, thank you.
All right, so we are to our second citizen comment period, and I know you, I thank you for waiting patiently, and so you have three minutes to address the city council.
I don't know how I can do all that in three minutes, but, well, I want to start by saying when I got the bill that there was a discount. I was so excited because I've been trying for many, many years to always stay under the 3,000 gallon limit, and let's see. So, back in...
Excuse me, could you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm Diana McConaughey.
Okay, thank you, Diane.
Let's see, okay, just a little, where I left off, back in 2020, I had wrote a letter to you, and I was outraged about the water bill that I got because I tried so hard to stay under the limit of 3,000 gallons, so I got a letter back from the lady at the City Hall, and then I got a letter from you, and, but you did not give me, well, let's see. Long story short, I sent you back a letter stating that that was nice of you to give me all that information, but you didn't mention the 0 to 3,000 gallons base fee. So, I went over 20 gallons, and I got charged an extra $28. So, now, here we are currently again, and of course, I'm way under 2,370 because it's winter and I don't water. But what happened with the new chart that you come up with is it gave, the people that used 0 to 5,000 gallons used to pay 81.50, and that's what I had to pay when I went over 20 gallons back in 2020. Happened a couple times, I have the bills. And, but now, what you did is you, you took those, the people that use 5,000 gallons, and now you're charging them 53, the same as me. So, they got a decrease, and I got an increase. So, and I didn't really understand when it says per thousand gallons, because what you're doing is you're taking this number, and you're multiplying it by however many gallons you use, so isn't that, you're being charged per gallon? And then, the last thing I want to say real quick is, the discount's great, but it's way under what, I don't know anybody that could make that small amount of money and even have a water city sewer bill. But I did call other cities to compare, and Bremerton gives 62 and older making under 40,000, 40% off their utilities. Kitsap Water District gives 30%, Kent gives 62 or older making under 66,000, 60% off their water and sewer, and 90% off their storm. So, 25% off is, is pretty low, and the, you have to make under $17,000 to even get that discount. So, like I said, I don't know anybody that could even live in a house or an apartment and make 17,000. So, what I'm kind of hoping is, you guys retake a look at that old chart and go back to the 0 to 3,000 gallons, so people that use less will have an incentive to keep using because otherwise, I might, might as well just let the water run free and use 5,000 gallons in the summer, being I'm going to pay the same amount. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
And as, as you know, the, it's going to keep going up, so it's, it's really a hardship on people like myself that work, but I make $17 an hour. So, you know, my annual income is about $30,000 a year, and so, that's, that's a, a pretty significant bill that I get every two months, and it's, you know, that's why I really strive to stay under that 3,000. And so, just hoping you'll take a look at that again and make some adjustments, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, Diane.
All right, thank you.
And I know that we just implemented the, the low income, low income discounts here just in the last couple of months and just put that program into place, so.
Uh-huh.
I, I know that the council's intent is that, to review how it, what, how it works, and, you know, and we want to make a, you know, make a difference out in the community with, with these discounts, so.
Yeah, and at least, I mean, I don't think it's right that you're giving people that use more a discount, a $28 discount, and you're charging me more, so.
I'm, I'm not certain that the system works quite that way, but you...
Well, it does, it's right on your chart. So, people that use right now, so your new chart is 0 to 5,000.
Diane, I'm not, we can't debate that here this evening, but I appreciate you...
Okay, well, just take a look at your chart because the numbers are wrong.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your comment. Anything for the, anybody online, Brandy, wishing to provide comment? Any hands raised?
There's nobody online other than what you see now.
All right.
Just Councilmember Rose Pepe.
All right, anything for the good of the order? Councilwoman Rose Pepe, anything you want to share? Okay, anybody else for the good of the order? Our meeting is adjourned.
Away from that, there is no 0 to 5,000.
Well, you know, I thought maybe somebody can help her walk through it.
Yeah, well, there could be a typo in all fairness. It could be a typo, but it shouldn't be the case anymore.
No, I know.
Get rid of that.
Right.
I didn't realize it was 17,000 was the...
Because of all of the charge we looked at.
Yes.
That person was going to benefit most.
Yes.
Those intentions.
Yep.